I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, a roll call.
Mayor Seaton.
President.
Oklahoma, Richard Arpin.
Here.
Rick Scardov.
Here.
Chris McClush.
Here.
Tim Brown.
Here. Okay, item three, adopt tonight's agenda. I will entertain a motion.
Go move.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. McClush made the second. Is there any discussion before I call for the question? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of adopting tonight's agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Mr. McClush makes that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Urban makes the second. Is there any discussion before I call for the question? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of tonight's consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes by zero. Meeting open to the public. Barb, is there anyone who'd like to speak tonight?
We have one person, Steve Felton.
Mr. Felton, well, I guess you know the, how to do it.
Yeah, I know the whole thing. Steve Felton, 22766 Poppy Street, northwest of New York. I was on last year, or last weekend, my concern is Poppy Street. The traffic on Poppy Street is ridiculous, okay? And one of the reasons is besides the fact that it's a two-way, is people treat it as an extension of Lake George Boulevard, and that's the problem. It's not like 221 where speeds are, 224 speeds are 55,000 hours. Our road is third, people don't look at the signs. We have signs up there, say, watch out for the cars, we just don't do it. There's been discussion now on Lake George Boulevard, which has created more traffic on Poppy. Friday night, I think there's over 75 cars that went down that road. I'm not kidding. 7:00 to 7:30 in the morning through school, 2:30 to 2:30, 2:30 to 3:00 after going to school, 4:00 to 7:00, there's people coming home from work. This is the problem that's happening, and I keep bringing this up, it's hard not to have your windows open for the traffic that goes down. But I'm not kidding, if you come out there checking and see, see the amount of traffic, it's ridiculous. Actually, they go through there because of the stoplight that's on Bridge Street versus going around by S.A. But the problem is the traffic influx and flow is becoming more and more wide. So I'm asking, what does a resident have to do to get the police, 13 police officers in the state, in the city, and I cannot believe one of them can't get out their car to reduce the speed rate, or at least to be present so the traffic slows down and becomes 30,000 hours long for which the state. What do I have to do? How many more times do I have to come here?
Mr. Coleman, will you talk with the chief and get back with Mr. Felton?
Yep, absolutely.
Please, thank you, appreciate it. I wish someone here stood.
All right. Moving along to petitions, requests and applications. Oh, Barb, was there anyone else?
No.
Okay, I want to meet you. ISD number 15, presentation of the five-year strategic plan. Our super is here, Mr. Ferguson, and his staff.
Thank you very much, Mayor Kerr, members of the council, and cabinet members and members of the audience, that were letting us come. Sorry to be brief, but we're very excited about the work that we recently completed in our district. And it's hard, we can tell, our first ever five-year strategic plan. So I have, Steph Parsons is our local 1977 union president, and she's, she's here, she was part of this process, and she also, she's also doing her superintendentcy. I want to say speaking, but I'm on practice with me, and so that's kind of the reason she's here. And then we have Scott Schwartz, who is one of our school owners. So we appreciate your time, I did leave some things on your, on your spots there, school calendar, and outline of the strategic plan and the half sheet. You just have to remember me, and we're handing you our every result. We appreciate the thought. Okay, so I always leave this slide in, I won't give it to you, but in essence, you know, it's the reason that we go through this process, that we wanted to create our future. It's not a place that we see how good that we're trying to do, we're creating it as we go. Why didn't we go ahead and do this process? It wasn't, it was quite an endeavor, an endeavor, it was, it cost us $50,000. And I tell everybody that because we're all about being transparent. And so we decided that we needed a long-term view, we wanted, we wanted everybody, all stakeholders in our district to know the direction that we're going, and the purpose for which, for the work that we do. And we came up with a, you see on the back there is our new mission statement, you also have it right in front of you on this. Our mission is to equip all students with knowledge and skills to empower them to achieve their dreams and full potential while becoming responsible citizens in a dynamic world. That's a really lofty goal, and we think it's a really good one, too. But so, let me get, let me get into the lesser goals a little bit, how did we get here? We started talking about this in 2013, actually. We contracted this Transformation Systems Limited in 2014, and some of you were involved in giving us feedback, either through the World Cafes that we had, those live meetings, where we brought people in to talk about what do you want to see out of your school district. We also had, we also had surveys on our website, and we mailed out some surveys, trying to get as much feedback as we could for our community, and our whole community. St. Francis, St. Isabelle, and over a full 165 square miles. We put together a core planning team that we think was very eclectic, Mayor Kane was on that, along with probably 15 of those 30 were probably structured employees. We had teachers, we had our A.D., we had principals, we had two students, I was on there as special ed director, directing director. We had members of the clergy, members of the parents, business representatives, just as many as this, as wider group as we could. We even, we even had a person who was, who was not always the most complimentary on how we do things in the district, and we wanted that person on purpose. And that was, it was really good to have them on there. So we put together this, this core planning team, we had five days of really long days of work to put this strategic plan together. We have the outline of it on the big sheet there. We also had two action planning teams, and they are the ones that are going to tell us how we're going to reach these, how we're going to do these things. And the measurement and design team is going to, going to tell us, how do we know if we're doing well or not? And so, core planning team is, is done with this work for this year, but we'll get back together in the spring, and we'll see how, how we've done. The board approved this on May 11th, and we have an implementation team that's already been able to work through year one. So we have this, you have the big sheet with you, the mission statement, the core values, strategic elements of the things that we're skating, we will not do anymore, what we will not do. We have 11 action plan results, 539 11 action plan, and three strategies.
And the, the core values are also in that.
Yeah, we're making a big deal about putting this stuff up everywhere we can. So, one of the things that we, as, as a core planning team, Mayor Kane contested this, we, we had to come to consensus on every word, everything we put together had to be consensus. And consensus isn't you brought me a person into, or people into majority rules, it's, it's, we had all 30, so 29 could say, no, I don't agree with that word, I don't agree with that statement. And we would work through that, we had to, if you were concerned, what's your alternative? And in the end, we all agreed that we would support this, not only publicly, but privately, and that's the thing. So everything that we, everything that we produced here, that we're committed to support publicly and privately. So we always, we start off with our core values, I don't mean to offend anybody by reading, reading things to believe it is that important that we are, every chance we give is skating this up out. So, we're on year one.
First one, trust and respect are fundamental for thriving relationships.
We believe that our community flourishes when individuals, families, and organizations collaborate.
We believe that every person matters and has value.
Have a really cool thing that came out today, there was a cross-country meeting last Thursday, and we, again, emailed from our A.D. today. And Elk River residents was so moved by what she saw at that cross-country meeting, she sent him an email explaining it. There was a, meet was over, JV meet was over for all practical purposes, and everyone was picking up their tents, cleaning up it, and one of our kids saw a kid from another team way back in the distance, still, still waiting. By far the last person, everyone forgot in the middle of the meeting, he rallied his team members to get to the finish line, and clocked for that kid, and to your firm, and then, and then other teams came in. But it was because our kids saw that, and, and made a big deal that, so for me, that's every person matters and has value, and our kids are giving it all at the time.
Right. We believe that responsibility and accountability are essential for personal growth, organizational growth, and community engagement.
Four more. We believe that commitment to expectations is essential, to high expectations, is essential to help achieve full individual and collective potential.
We believe that everyone benefits when culture and diversity are understood and respected.
We would lifelong learn and enrich as individuals and create opportunities. So when we talk about students, we're talking about work to 100, almost 100. Typically, people think of kindergarten through 12th grade, or maybe from childhood through 12th grade, when we talk about students, we're talking about everybody.
We, we believe that open exchange of ideas and communicated planning are integral for continuous improvement.
Those are our core values. Strategic elements are things that we said we will not do, okay? We will not allow past experiences to interfere with consideration, no ideas.
We will not make decisions without using relevant data provided by appropriate personnel.
We will not continue or adopt any program or service unless it's aligned with and advances the mission there, and is accompanied by the necessary human and financial resources. So it may be a great idea, and maybe someday we'll be able to do it, we don't have the money or the people to do it, we're not going to, we're not going to go there. This is, you know, another way of looking at a strategic plan, you have the delimiters on the outside, the mission at the very top. What we're working on this year are setting the base, kind of related to the core values. So these are the results statements. People from TSL said, you know, I mean, and Mayor Kane can attest to this, we're all pretty fired up about this one we've got done. And, and you kind of want to tackle a lot of it, because you're ready to go, but they urged us to no more than three. Because brand new one on the shoot, if you take on more than that, you won't, you won't achieve any of them in the first year, and you can get discouraged really fast. So these are the three that we're working on this year. ISD 15 uses established protocols to support transparent communication, to foster trust among all ISD 15 stakeholders, that's why we're here. We're talking to, we're, you know, we want to be in open meetings, people can hear, you know, what we are, what we are about, what our new way of doing business is, and we want to, we want that communication to help foster relationships. So we're going into several of the cities already, and we'll keep going to a new group at a lap speed, so. We're also going to, every ISD 15 employee that spans a strategic plan, and we'll be in close, we presented that to large groups, small groups, that are, that are going to get together to start the year, so we're well learning that one.
And one of the key points in this, we used the word understand versus support for year one, to make sure that every employee understands that we thought was the starting point, and to put forward supports, and then we didn't feel that would be the realistic goal. So even that one, we're alone, had much, much discussion going back and forth, but that's where we're at right now.
We'll get to the supports, I'm afraid, and only one that'll understand it. And then this one, I think is going to be tricky, or not tricky, it's going to take a lot more work than it looks like on the surface. And then ISD 15 has a recognizable and consistent brand, we're a large district. Traditionally, people call us the St. Francis School District. Maybe that will continue, maybe that won't. When you're 165 square miles, and you have parts of six cities and municipalities, and two counties, and two townships, and, you know, there are, we have to decide what are we going to call ourselves, and I, and we'll do that together. It won't be a, oh, I think it should be superintendent, it's not my call, we're going to, we'll work on that together. It'll be something with ISD 15, the only thing I know for sure is that, that our colors are blue and white. And so if you love us, if you go to our gym now, you're reds gone. And so we are, everything that we produce, everything that we put out, we're going to make sure we have some colors, actually, blue 281, and, and it was just kind of navy. That's supposed to, we can get out that, that material, those signs, but, so we want people to know that if they get something from the school district, it looks, it will have a certain look and certain colors, so you just know exactly that's, that's your street district. I wouldn't really ask, you know, you have a lot of things to do outside of the game, many times. Do you have any questions, anything you're curious about, you can call me anytime, and the number's in the calendar, it's all, it's on the website, it's all over the place. We look forward to working with cities and continuing that work in the future, and if you have any questions at all, you know.
Council, do you think today?
No.
I just want to say that I'm so grateful for being a part of this thing. To see 30 people come together and agree on one thing is amazing, I've never seen that in my life. People would disagree, and as a lot of times, human nature, people disagree, and, well, you, you're no good, because, you know, that kind of a thing. There was none of that. Somebody would say, well, I disagree with that. Okay, why do you disagree with that? Well, I think da-da-da-da-da, and we should do it this way. That would start some more discussion. And we just keep discussing and boiling it all down, till everybody in the, in the room said, I agree. It was the most amazing event I've ever been to.
I'd agree, and I'd agree to support it publicly and privately.
Yes.
That's, that's, that's sometimes the hard part, see, you get, now, okay, I'm with you, but then when you're, when you're talking with, you know, the groups of people away from, you know, the big crowd, that's where the road makes the road.
Yeah.
You got that from everybody, and I believe it's helping.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is the St. Francis Youth Basketball Association.
Baseball.
Baseball, I, I don't have my reading glasses, I'm sorry. Do we have any representatives from that group? Could you come up right, please?
We have the city of St. Francis, thank you, if you should help out, if you don't need anybody to help build the address.
One. Okay, next is a public hearing for the Herbst annexation.
Mr. Mayor, on this agenda item, this is a public hearing to consider a petition by the property owner who's present this evening to have the city annex a 20-acre parcel currently located in Athens Township. The property is legally described in the petition, generally abuts the northern boundary, and the reason for the proposed annexation is to develop a landlocked parcel for residential purposes. So with that, I would ask you to open up a public hearing and invite public comment.
Okay, it is 6:20, and I open a public hearing, and invite anyone to speak tonight. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Is there anyone here to speak? Okay, Barb, I'll close the public hearing at 6:21.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the action item on this is later this evening.
Is there any questions for Mr. Veepek at this point? We'll move on, we have Northwood Securities, and Mr. Eilert said to come and talk with us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and to the city council, Mayor Hackett, there is a couple of items. One, a finance plan summary, which provides the detail on a couple of upcoming bond issues, and then there is a resolution related to a credit passing program, which I'll describe. The bond issues, there are two, like I wrote this. The first is a bond relating to Carey Street and Bridge Street. And this one is sized, in a preliminary sizing, at 975,000, financed over a 15-year term. Tonight, I'm just here for information and to kind of set the table, if you will. All the bonds would be bringing back for your consideration on October 5th. So I wanted to comment and present and ask, or see if you have any questions, certainly have that meeting, we'll just come up. The Carey Street project is part of that 975,000, that one is paid 40% by special assessments and benefiting property owners, and the balance is paid for by tax relief. The Bridge Street is a sewer extension, so that first bond issue covers those two projects in Bridge Street and Carey Street. There will be, and I know that Jared or you are probably well aware that there's additional financing for Bridge Street coming in 2016. So that's the first project, the first bond issue, rather. The second relates to the new wastewater treatment plant, and this is a temporary obligation, a one-year financing for about 16.2 to 16.3 million. So it's a rather sizable financing for a one-year term. And, and I believe that you've had this described to you before, but I'll, I'll try to do that one more time. The need for this financing is, is actually good, I think, for the city. It's, my understanding, working with city staff, is that the Public Facilities Authority, we are getting here long-term, long-term. If you wait until awarding, until 2016, there's a potential of up to $4 million of additional grant. And when you do a large project, like waste water treatment plant, every grant dollar certainly helps. And that's in addition to what I believe is a point source grant of approximately 3 million, so. So according to the PFA, then, you need some construction. Last I checked, city doesn't have general fund reserves of approximately 60 million. So the need for this financing is to take you basically from now until the PFA will refund their program in 2016. So this financing is structured for one year with an early exit, meaning an early prepaying option for the city. So after six months from when you issue the bonds, you can prepay the bonds at any date thereafter without penalty. So if the state legislature refunds the wastewater infrastructure program, loan program, when those monies are available, then the city will pay off this short-term obligation, and convert from this one-year obligation to a 30-year, up to 30-year loan with the state. Any questions on that? The city and I, or city staff and I, Joe and Nersy, we had, the rating call was Standard and Poor's City. That's the firm that has provided your bond rating in the recent past. Call went very well, and Joe and Nersy certainly did a lot of good prep work for that. City has an existing AA minus bond rating, which is very good. From a credit standpoint, that's, again, like your personal credit score, anything in the AA category is considered a very strong credit, so. I would expect that Standard and Poor's would reassign that very strong bond or AA minus. We would expect to get that news next week in anticipation, because certainly October 5th is coming right around the corner, so. We need to get the bond rating signed in advance at our October 5th meeting, so that we can price the bonds with that strong rate. Timing of getting money, because I know that the city has been, you know, paying some of the, some of the costs related to both of these projects, bridge, Carey, and certainly wastewater treatment plant. You'd be getting the proceeds of this bond issue right at the end of October, very first part of the year, so. So pretty, you know, quick timing, if you will, in terms of, of the term around those bonds. The interest rates will go certainly on October 5th, but based upon the current market, the smaller bond for Bridge and Carey are on 2 and 3/4 percent. And by virtue of the six... And by virtue of the $16 million bond being over for one year, that interest rate, we're looking at near 1/2 percent. So that's a nice low interest rate. One advantage, if you will, of having the short-term obligation is that, my understanding from working with city staff and talking to the Public Facilities Authority, your long-term, up to 30-year interest rate with the PFA is approximately 1.5 to 1.6 percent. So at least for the first year, you'll be borrowing money that went well under 1 percent. So, and then you'll be converting to, which is still a really strong interest rate, 1.6 percent for 30 years. So I thought I would just mention that. The both bonds, and this is getting into a little bit of Bonds on One, but they're both issued non-bank qualified. Each calendar year, Minnesota probably has up to $10 million that you can issue bank qualified. Bank qualified means that a community bank that purchases the bonds gets a tax credit. And so by virtue of that, you might get a little bit better interest rate. Because your bonds in total are exceeding $10 million, these are non-bank qualified. Now, on the very short-term obligation, there's really no differential in interest rates over one year. On the 15-year term for Bridge and Carey, a little bit higher interest rate, a quarter up to 1/2 percent over the life of the bonds. And so, again, that's just something that FYI, that's, that doesn't mean you can't market your bonds effectively, no, it just means you have to bring them, just a little bit higher. Any questions, Mayor or City Council?
Counsel? I have no questions.
Okay. Well, the methodology that we're recommending is that Northland Securities, our firm, will be directly purchasing the bonds and providing them to investors. What I'll do is work with city staff on making sure that, you know, that that's a fair interest rate that's being, the bonds are being purchased at, and so we'll be well in touch with them and report that back to you on October 5th. And on your agenda is a resolution, and that relates to your one-year bond. That is a, the state of Minnesota, actually, the Public Facilities Authority, which is providing you the financing for wastewater treatment plant, also has what's called a credit enhancement program. That's one where for any sewer, water, or storm project, the state of Minnesota will guarantee the payment of principal interest on those bonds if you enter into their credit enhancement program. The resolution that you have for this evening authorizes you to enter into that program. An investor that has not only your strong bond rating, but a guarantee of statement so that there'll be return on their investment, is, again, willing to accept a very aggressive little interest rate. So that's the resolution that you have for this evening. If you have any questions, certainly, and I'll address that.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Eilert. All right, with that, we have Resolution 2015-48 relating to the issuance of general obligation temporary sewer revenue bonds, Series 2015B, governing and obliging the city to be bound by and to use provisions of Minnesota statutes, Section 446A dot 086, to guarantee the payment of the principal and interest on the bonds. I will not read that again. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would make that motion?
Make a motion to approve?
To approve, yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Skordall made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McClish made the second, I believe?
Yes.
Okay, before I call for the question, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of Resolution 2015-48 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Okay, moving on. Item number 7A, and this is ordinance number 204, second series, an ordinance granting a franchise to Midcontinent Communications to maintain a cable communication system in the city of St. Francis, Minnesota, setting forth conditions accompanying the grant to the franchise, providing for regulation and use of the system, and prescribing penalties for the violation of its provisions. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
To accept.
To accept? Okay, Mr. Brown makes a motion to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Orpin makes a second. Before calling for the question, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, which is going to be a roll call vote. Mr. Skordall?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. McClish?
Aye.
Mr. Orpin?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Okay, ordinance number 205, second series, an ordinance adding Section 2-6-0, Community Economic Development. At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion?
To approve? To approve, okay. I have a motion by Mr. McClish. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Orpin seconds. Is there any discussion before I call for the question? Hearing none, Mr. Orpin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McClish?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Skordall?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on, ordinance 206, second series, an ordinance amending the 1-1, 1-2, or I-1, I-2, B-1, B-2, and B-3 zoning districts pertaining to the expansion of permitted uses within the B-3 business park district and terrifying purpose statements. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we adopt this ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the city code regarding the licensing for alcohol sales of, well, wait a minute, I skipped a step, didn't I? There we go. I recommend we approve this ordinance amending the I-1, I-2, B-1, B-2, and B-3 zoning districts as presented.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Skordall. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McClish. Is there any discussion before I call for the question? Hearing none, Mr. McClish, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Skordall?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Orpin?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Motion passes. Ordinance 207, second series, an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the city code regarding the licensing for alcohol sales at production facilities. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, Mr. Orpin makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Mr. Skordall seconds. Is there any discussion before I call for the question? Hearing none, Mr. Brown, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McClish?
Aye.
Mr. Skordall?
Aye.
Mr. Orpin?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Motion passes 5-0. And for the final ordinance tonight. Ordinance number 208, second series, an ordinance of the city of St. Francis, Minnesota, annexing land located in Athens Township by Sandy County, Minnesota, pursuant to Minnesota statutes 414.033 subdivision 2, in parentheses 3, permitting annexation by ordinance. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
To approve? Mr. Brown makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McClish seconds. Is there any discussion before I call for the question? Hearing none, Mr. Orpin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Skordall?
Aye.
Mr. McClish?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to reports. Looks like staff, staff has no reports tonight. Okay. Counsel, Mr. Orpin?
I, this is my report?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to say I did run the 5K for the SFCD on Saturday, and it was a good turnout, and I'm glad to see a lot of people there. It was a tough run, and we ran every hill in St. Francis, I think. Other than that, we talked about in the last meeting where we approved to recognize October as the National Violence Awareness Month, and then I asked if we were doing anything, and we really weren't. Well, after meeting, somebody asked me, we should do something. So I called Alexander House, and they have different ways we can partner with them as a city. Some of them don't really take much money, any at all, which is just being like a donation hub, so we can bring in, have the community donate things that the Alexander House needs, personal items, clothes, food, things like that, and then we can give it to them. I did have some other contacts, so if we wanted to get more involved with them as a city, I don't know what the financial cost would be to us at this time, but I do have a contact I could give to Mr. Coleman if the city, if the council thinks that we should explore this option a little bit. Personally, I would really like us to, at least, at least, be the hub to try to help gather these items, so we can partner with the school, and they can do a fund driver for us, and we can, at least, help in that way, I would think. So what do you guys think?
Barb, I know you and Anna were looking at anything. Have you come up?
Yeah, we'll be putting it on the website along with Facebook, acknowledging it, but if you want us to have a drop off site, that's what you'll do.
I think it's something at least we could do, I would think.
I personally think that's a good idea. Counsel, Mr. Brown?
I do, too.
Yeah, I agree.
Sure.
Okay, I'll give the contact information to Mr. Coleman at the meeting.
Very good. Anything else?
That's all.
Mr. Skordall?
Last week, I had a citizen, I guess, ask about the process for, how should I say it? Moving back to this story, was there's a, there was a residence down on Ambassador between 47 and Stark that had some graffiti on it. I think some profanity, and I think a poor attempt to just wash it. That's the way it was described. Evidently, the graffiti stayed there for a couple of weeks, and this person thought it was, boy, the city ought to be a little more proactive in getting stuff like that cleaned up, especially when, I believe, the graffiti was up over the weekend of city white garage stuff. People come into town, and now here you got the whole side of a garage or house painted with stuff. So the solution was, well, the city's not going to take care of spray painting, why can't somebody go over there at midnight and just spray paint over it and fix it? So I guess my question is, I kind of like to, and I don't need an answer now, but I would like a little bit of background on how we deal with, and I don't know if it was a vacant property, and I think he, I think the citizen made a phone call on a Friday, and he might have caught somebody in the office, I don't know who's in the office on Friday who's answering phones, but he thought it was a building inspector, and the answer he got was, "Well, we're aware of it." And he didn't think that was an adequate response to a situation like that where, you know, kind of, I wouldn't call it light is the right word, but something that doesn't put the city in a good light. Is there anything that, are we as proactive as we need to be? I think that was his question.
Mr. Skordall? The situation with that house is it's owned by the bank. We cannot step foot on that property, we're trespassing.
Yep.
The bank was notified immediately. Isn't that correct? Paul?
I'm the right guy.
Yeah. So...
And I believe it has since been at least rectified in a sense that it hasn't been painted over, but, but it did, it did take a couple of weeks, but I understand we can't take everything into your own hands.
Correct.
But the process is react, react on the complaint and work with the property owner, in this case, the property owner is not a resident of that house, it's the bank. Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Mr. Brown?
Not too, I did attend the fire department meeting here a week and a day ago, and just does mainly normal fire department business, so things seem to be moving along.
Okay. Mr. McClish?
First, I'd like to thank city staff for getting our city council meetings turned over to our YouTube channel. This is our, actually, our first night here, so now residents and business owners can watch our council meetings live on YouTube, on their cell phones, computers, and also the newer television sets that have the YouTube app. So this is a great step, so thank, thank you so much. If anybody's been driving down Bridge Street in front of the St. Francis Dental Care, they actually have a sign that's out front that says, you know, "We support our, you know, our local police and firefighters," so that was really nice to see. It's really nice to see a business that, you know, that supports our police and firefighters, so. Just a reminder for the public, the St. Francis High School homecoming football game is against St. Michael this Friday at 7:00 PM at the high school, so just to make everybody aware. And last is I will not be able to attend the next council meeting. That's all I have.
Okay. Report from the mayor. I got several things here. Most of you know, or maybe all of you know, we have a sergeant who's out on medical leave, Sergeant Jake Rayling. Tomorrow night at Beefo Brady's from 7:00 to 9:00, and I believe the following Tuesday at Beefo Brady's from 7:00 to 9:00, they will be up there selling T-shirts and taking donations for Sergeant Rayling. October 3rd, beginning at 3:00 PM in the afternoon, there's a fundraiser for him at Captain's up on Long Lake. So I would urge everyone to attend and to give a little bit to help him. Everybody knows Jake, Jake is a, is a good guy, so. This Thursday, I've been invited to the North Metro Mayor's Group to tour the Viking Stadium, selling T-shirts and taking donations for Sergeant Rayling. So I'm going to be taking a look at doing that. On the 30th, Mr. Coleman, myself, and Mr. Leebek will be interviewing for the planner position. So we were hoping to interview the final ones before the October 5th meeting, but it doesn't sound like that's going to work. We'll talk later.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
We'll figure out when we can get that done. Tomorrow morning, we will be, are you going to be with us tomorrow morning at the HRA meeting?
No.
Okay. I didn't think so.
No.
You're nice. Mr. Coleman and I will be meeting with the Anoka County HRA regarding the St. Francis Community Center with the Y. Other than that, is there any other business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. McClish? It was last, beginning of last month, I discussed about the Poppy Street traffic enforcement, the complaints that we've received on us. We have a gentleman that spoke earlier tonight. Let's have a few notes here. I actually was out jogging this morning, and I ran into one of our officers, and he actually mentioned that he's been doing some enforcement on that street after, before and after school, and also today, he was working on the north side of the high school on Rummer Boulevard, because there's been complaints over there, too. I just want to let you know that the police are aware. The St. Francis Police Department currently has 11 police officers. We have one officer that's on leave right now. All those officers don't work at the same time, so a lot of times we only have one officer on, maybe two or three, because we do have an officer that works in the schools. So I'm not too sure if the police department still has a speed sign, but maybe that might be a good solution to have a speed enforcement sign placed on that road, because the officer stated that any time he parks on that road on a squad car, you know, people see him and they never speed. But once he leaves, then they start racing down the road again, so. But just want to let you know that they're aware, and they're, and they're working as hard as they can.
Can I just say something on that, if I can?
Sure.
The sign that you're talking about, they took that down because they had battery problems with that. The police chief told me that they were trying to work with the state on some, for a bigger sign on wheels, as you see in the city, you see a big digital sign, a trailer type of thing. He was working on that last year, or that might have been that. But again, one of those, was a change, a whole sign out there that was out last year, it was a battery had issues, so they took it down, hasn't worked for a longer time.
Okay. So that might be some, another solution that we can try to look into, so. That's all I have.
Good. Is there any new business tonight? Is there any new business? Yes, Mr. Brown?
We're trying to tail down a date for a workshop. How's that coming?
October 18th is the latest proposal, at 2:00 PM.
Did anybody make that?
I'm not sure.
Obviously not. Let me, we can.
I think I can make it.
Mr. Brown, do you know?
I can give it a good try. I think it's a little short. I'll check.
Yeah. Would you give me a call? We'll work.
Okay, any new business? Okay, any new business? Hearing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you.